All right, you ready, Mike?
Yep.
Ann? Debbie?
Yes, okay.
Everybody ready to go? Okay. I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order Monday, January 4th, 2021. Happy New Year, everybody. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I hope everybody had a Happy New Year, and I know we're all looking forward to a new and hopefully prosperous year coming ahead. So I think before we start, I'd like to introduce Debbie Randolph, our newest commissioner. And Debbie, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
I'm Debbie Randolph. If you can hear me through the mask, thank you. I'm excited, humbled. Lots to learn, lots I've already read, lots more to be read. I am sure I will make mistakes, and I'm sure they will be pointed out to me. But know that none of my mistakes will be from an angle of personal greed or vengeance, or it's just that I'm a human and humans make mistakes. But I will do my research, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Debbie. We're happy for you to be here too as well. And you're right, we all make mistakes. I've made plenty of them. And I'll continue to make more. So I just hope that everybody forgives me for them. So I guess, Mike, do you have anything?
Nope. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
First thing is we have minutes from December 21st and December 23rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st and December 23rd.
I'll second those.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes from December 21st and December 23rd. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. So Teresa Monson sent us a and there's been a lot of questions about getting the COVID vaccine and the process for that. And she sent us a sheet that explains how that works and the order that people will be getting their vaccinations and how to request those. We did post it on our website, but I did make some copies for anybody that would be interested in it. So they are here. Did you ever get a copy? You probably didn't get one. So I'll leave them here if anyone's interested. Okay. With that, I will start our meeting with public comment. Is there any public comment?
Do you have Cheryl Campbell online watching? Let me have her say good morning.
All right. Okay. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the first order of business, which is electing the presiding officer for the Broadwater Board of County Commissioners. I would make a motion to elect Mike Deldger.
I would second that motion.
Goody. See how that railroad works?
Yeah.
I'm getting the hang of this.
All right.
Mike's been on that road before.
I think there's some voter fraud in this issue.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint or to elect Mike Deldger, the presiding officer for the Broadwater Board of County Commissioners. Is there any public discussion? Any discussion? Nothing online? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries. Okay. Next order of business is to elect the vice chair for the Broadwater Board of County Commissioners.
I'll nominate Darrell Folford for vice chair.
I will second that.
All right, I see how that works. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Darrell Folford as the vice chair for the Broadwater Board of County Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll go ahead and finish conducting today's meeting, and then our next meeting, Mike, will take over. Next, I guess, on the agenda is the decision for boundary location for Joe Nelson and Nicole Brown, Community Development and Planning. Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning. I believe each of you have a copy of the boundary location survey and the affidavit. So this is a request from Joe Nelson for a boundary relocation. As you can see, about midway between the two pivots on the east boundary, there's a boundary location being proposed to move the boundary from kind of a southeast-facing direction back up to more of a east-west direction. So that's one boundary location. Also on this survey, he is proposing another boundary location in, I'm looking at it from the back, I'm sorry, the northeast corner here to expand that pivot corner.
Up there on the northeast.
Northeast corner, yep. And his reasons for this exemption request, as it states on his affidavit, are for enlarging residential tract for financing and separation from agricultural pivot tract. And this has been through the COS Review Committee with no concerns or comments electronically.
And the top, the top one up there in the northeast is, that's the one that's expanding for the residential?
Um, no.
No?
Nope, there is no residence in that corner. And I'm not sure why he said "expanding for residential", because it's not actually enlarging the residential tract. It's actually making it smaller because the residence is in this.
Right, that's what I thought it was too.
Corner here, yeah. So maybe in the future, he's proposing this for residential purposes. But if it is created as an egg tract, he will have to go through subdivision. And I don't know if it is created as an egg tract or not. He will have to seek DEQ approval. I was hoping that the surveyor, Joe, would be here today because I did have a question on that, on this portion right here, this enlarging residential, if indeed it's meant to be this portion here for future residential. But in any case, in order to be buildable, state guidelines and county guidelines will have to be met.
Because it's still considered agriculture, right?
Possibly.
Possibly?
Yeah.
Do you guys have any other questions?
No. Here's.
Oh, good. I know you're just getting here. Sorry, I have a question on this. The, Joe's reason for the boundary relocation is for enlarging residential tract. Is that what he's considering, this residential tract here?
I think it's this one right here. He's enlarging this one and straightening out that boundary because it's kind of had a few because I believe there's an existing house.
There's a home there, but the old boundary is here and it's moving up. So it's not actually enlarging the residential. So that's.
That must be, yeah, that one. I know, I was kind of on the outside of it. Lori Mose is purchasing that. I own it at five acres.
Okay.
I think her son's building there or something.
So that might be the residential that they're talking about. Okay, so it would be that northeasterly corner.
The northeast corner.
Correct.
Okay, I guess we don't have any further questions. Do you guys have anything else?
I don't have any.
You do? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Nelson-COS boundary relocation.
I would second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve the Joe Nelson COS boundary relocation. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
If you would sign this copy, just any line on there. Commissioner. And then Ann, I'll just get that from you. All right, can we? I'll sign it now.
Want us to date it, Nicole?
Please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay. Next on the agenda is the, to approve the solicitation for request or proposals. And it will be for the security upgrades and the new generator for the detention center and courthouse. And Mike Meyer, Buildings Manager.
Good morning.
Pardon, Mike?
So this is the next step for the two Homeland Security grants that I applied for. I already finished cybersecurity review, the EHP reviews. They've been all approved. And now we're at the RFPs for the construction, finding the contractors to install and supply the materials for the upgrade of the security system for the courthouse and the jail, cameras and doors, and also the new generator to be installed for the courthouse and detention center.
So it's been a little while, Mike, since we have discussed this. And like you mentioned, we have already received the grants to do these two projects. Maybe refresh everybody's mind why we needed the new generator.
Well, the new generator, the old generator, the existing generator now only runs about maybe forty percent of the detention center. Nothing of the sheriff's department and just the phone system in the courthouse. That's it. So the new generator is, just in case we have power outage long-term or an emergency disaster, so that the whole sheriff's department is a whole. The, all the 911 phones, all the, the whole entire detention center will not be without power, lighting. Also, the whole top floor of the sheriff's department, so all their computers and their phone systems. And then also, the courthouse will now be part of it so it can be used, utilized, if there's an emergency. Also, the whole attorneys and the district courts need to have power if there's problems. And then also, the existing generator will be utilized at the dinner hall for meals and any kind of warmings on it.
Right, so that's an important point. You know, the existing generator there is now will be utilized for the senior center so that we will have that facility in case we need warming or meals cooked and those kind of things. So I think this is a great upgrade for Broadwater County.
It'd be an excellent upgrade.
Yep, yep. All right, good. And our security system, we can't talk too much about that, but I know that that's been needed for a while.
Yeah, we just need an upgrade of our security system.
All right, all right, very good. You guys have any questions?
And all of this is, the funding's covered from the grant?
Everything's covered from the grant. Of course, we're going to find out a little bit more because COVID has created other issues before when this was all bid out. It was pre-COVID. So I'm hoping that we don't have a huge increase in materials.
Yeah.
And that's a possibility. So we'll see, we'll see when all the monies come in. All the, I mean, all the bids come in.
Mike, did you have anything?
Nope.
All right, good. Well, I know the RFPs will be out. They'll be advertised for almost a month, right, Mike?
Uh huh. We give them approximately six weeks for people to respond and get bids in. Trying to give them enough time. I have time. But then the grant, I do not have to finish the grant until the end of October. So, and then I can get an extension too, if I need to.
What the plan is, is hopefully, maybe we could get this started, have it completed this year, right? This summer?
I'm hoping to have the security stuff completed by the summer and then the whole generator completed because you can't start digging until the ground thaws, which, I don't know. We continue this winter. We can start digging tomorrow.
Right, exactly. Okay, perfect, sounds good.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mike. Do you have any questions for us or anyone?
Nope, I'm good. Well, thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for proposals for the generator, the window into the clerk and court's office and the excavation.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the solicitation for RF, for the request or proposals for security upgrades and the new generator for the detention center and the courthouse. And is there any discussion? Anything online? No? Okay. All right, with that, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You're going to go ahead and get those? Mike? You're going to, you're going to go ahead and work on that then? Getting those sent out then?
Yes, I'm going to get them sent out in the paper this week.
All right.
And I'll start making some phone calls too.
All right, perfect. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on the agenda are task orders to be signed from Great West Engineering. And
I skipped.
Did I skip something? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, thank you. Go ahead and follow my own agenda. There you go. Next is the decision for metal arc search contract for digitizing and archiving our county records. And we have already approved the financing for this. We were just waiting on a contract that we could all agree on. And Cory has reviewed this contract and has approved it for us. And this contract is for all of our, I don't know if any of you have been to the vault in the clerk and recorder's office and all those books that are in there. This will get all of those digitized and make them available, hopefully, online for everybody that would like to use them. But equally important is to preserve them in case there was a natural disaster of some sort or a fire or whatever, that those records will be preserved and not lost.
Lady just brought that in. She said she found the document.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. Yep. And it does also utilize the DocuPro system, which we currently have. So all of the documents that we do have in digital format will be imported into this as well and indexed. So it's going to be able to be used by our staff. Say, for example, if we have to work from home again, hopefully, we'll never have to do that. But if we do have to, we will have access to that as well as, as well as the public will have access to those records without having to come to the courthouse. So I think that's going to be a good deal. So the contract is for the labor, the scanning of approximately 425 books, labor for indexing and quality insurance of the index records, uploading the images to a cloud storage. And the payment will be sixty percent down and then there will be twenty percent in sixty days and then a final twenty percent upon completion. And I think what's important to know also is that this information will not only be stored in a secure cloud, but it'll be stored by the vendor on a digital hard drive and we will actually be given a digital hard drive for the county to store as well. So we'll have three places that all this information is stored and then to be updated, I guess, periodically as time goes on. And the amount for that contract was eighty thousand dollars. You guys have any other questions?
And this doesn't include the microfilm?
It does not include the microfilm. That's a separate process. It actually has not really been developed yet, and they're working on that. So someday down the road, we'll probably have to do the microfilm portion of that. But for right now, it does not include that.
Does this include new documents?
Yeah, so all the new documents that we can, that we'd like, say today, that we create today, that's part of the DocuPro system. So as they're created, they will continue to be imported and be available. Any questions, Doug? Or expand on what I've already said? And I know you've been working with Braden quite a bit on this as well. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's by far cheaper than anybody else has ever came in with a bid.
Yeah, it is. I guess one thing maybe I wanted to mention, this is something that the commission has been trying to do for probably the past six months or longer. But the challenge we ran into is we weren't the only ones trying to do it. And this is now, coming into January, we finally have the ability to do that. This company is available that can do it for us. We would have liked to have done it earlier, but we just had to wait our turn, so to speak. So here we are.
Last question.
Sure.
Shirley Wilson. What is the lifetime of these digital records? Does you hear various things from seven years to forever?
Yeah, it's not forever, but I don't know. I've heard, I don't know, it's like a thousand years or something like that. But I would.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Because you hear everything from,
Right.
you know, a second to sixty hours, so.
And I would, of course, I'm just guessing that at some point down the road, as technology changes, that we may be able to import it into that new technology that may preserve.
Just so we don't lose them, I guess. Because there are some things that, you know, you might have to look up from eighty years ago.
Yeah, well, I think that's, you know, having this stored in three separate places, you know.
But if lifetime altered.
And it's storing the paper records that we already have and we still will have those.
Yeah, right.
I'm just curious.
And I guess, thinking about that, you know, maybe since there's not so many people going through the paper records may help preserve the paper records longer as well. You know, so that might be a benefit.
So will those paper records be kept at the county building or off-site?
No, in the county.
In the county building still? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be in the clerk and recorder's where they haven't always been.
Any other questions, you guys? No? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the metal arc search contract for records preservation.
Your second?
I will second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the metal arc search contract for records preservation. Any discussion? Okay, anything online? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next is the Great West Engineering task orders. Thanks, Doug.
Yep, you bet.
And these task orders were posted on the website, but I'll go ahead and go through them. The first one is general services for our on-call engineering. And Great West Engineering's scope of services under this task order is to provide technical assistance to Broadwater County for miscellaneous minor work items under five thousand dollars in value. Request for services may be verbal in order to save time, but will be followed up in writing via email. The second one is to develop a The, uh, second one is to develop a request for proposal template for management of the silos recreation area. Integrating, uh, selection criteria specified by the county includes attendance at a kickoff meeting at the silos recreation area. Coordinate with a contract attorney to review and update the agreement for management of the SRA. Provide attorney with comments received from the county. Great West Engineering staff member will attend and provide input at the selection board meeting for the RFQ and RFP. And they have allocated up to four hours, um, for this, uh, process and that is, they're estimating that to be around thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the next one is for floodplain administration and that's something that's, that's ongoing throughout the year, uh, with the county. And, uh, Nicole does a lot of that with, uh, the subdivision work that she does and also our sanitarian. So, uh, they have, uh, allocated or estimated that it may cost, uh, five thousand dollars, uh, throughout the year for them to consult with us on any type of floodplain administrative issues. Well, those are the three task orders before us. Any questions? And I guess maybe Debbie Fars for like the, the on-call engineering services, do you understand how that works? Okay.
As needed.
Okay, as needed, yeah. So, for example, the road department has, uh, some question or maybe needs some engineering on a road or a bridge or something, then they will
That's who they call.
That's who they'll call and, and then, uh, they'll make recommendations and, and those types of things. That's just, that's one example. Uh, also, uh, our solid waste, um, department will, may use them for some solid waste issues. What else, Mike? I mean, there's lots of things that we use them for, oh, for, um, grants, grant writing.
Grant process, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll probably use them for grant, uh, writing. Anyway, lots of things.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Great West task orders for general services, the silos recreation, RFP and floodplain administration.
I'll second that motion.
Alright. Motion's been made and seconded to sign the task orders with Great West Engineering for, uh, general services on-call engineering, the silos recreation, uh, management, RFP and for floodplain administration. Is there any discussion? Anything online?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, um, I have some mail here that I, we should read and, uh, this first was a letter from the, um, the towns and tree board. It says, "Dear Commissioners, the towns and tree board would like to thank you for the continuation of the two thousand dollar pilt funding received from the county over the past few years. As you have noticed, we have just completed pruning all the trees and shrubbed at the courthouse and detention center. Thanks to the county crew for their help. We also gave them some pruning lessons." So we do appreciate, um, the tree board and, and all their work that they do and Pat Plantenburg is, always does a great job. We did receive a check from, uh, JSJ Inc. from the Silos Camp ground for two hundred and forty-nine dollars. And I believe that might've been for, for fees from, uh, camping fees from September until now, I believe that's what that's for. Also have, um, vendor claims in the amount of eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-two cents.
I'll make a motion to approve claims instead of my
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve claims in the amount of eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, let's see, uh, we do have a one PM meeting, uh, with a discussion for the public health administrative assistant job description and a, they discussed the salary matrix, so we will continue at one o'clock. Is there anything else?
Thank you, I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
I know.
Um, also, there is on the agenda for Wednesday, January sixth, that there'll be a working meeting at two PM with David Sigler from Bridger Brewery and attorney Nathan Bayloo. That's for January sixth at two PM. Alright, I guess if there's nothing else, we're adjourned at ten thirty-nine?
Are you adjourned or have recessed?
I guess, I guess we'll recess, I'm sorry, we'll recess. Should've. Thank you, Shirley, happy new year.
Happy new year.